Good afternoon, my name is Yuvia. We are pleased to provide Spanish interpretation services this evening. This includes interpretation during the meeting and for those who want to provide public comment. Buenas tardes, me llamo Yuvia. Estamos complacidos de proveer servicios de interpretación en español esta noche. Esto incluye interpretación durante la reunión y para aquellos que quieran proveer comentario público. Thank you, appreciate that. Alright, so before we get to the agenda, I'll just walk through a few items. So if this is your first time attending one of our city commission meetings, let me walk you through just a few of the reminders. So this is an official city meeting with city business to be conducted. So we'll start off the meeting with an opportunity for public comment. The first opportunity for public comment is public comment on agenda items. So earlier today, we had a number of standing committee meetings where we discussed and voted on a number of items. So if you are here to speak on any of those action items, I'll ask you to come forward in just a minute. A few things about public comment, we ask that you share your name, the city that you live in. We'll give you three minutes to speak. And for the first opportunity for public comment, we ask that you be really explicit about what action item you're referring to. So that we know what item to look at in our packet when you give comment on that first opportunity. So a couple other things about our meeting procedures, you'll see them up there on the wall. But we also ask that you ensure that you direct your comments to this body. Also want to make sure that you know that it's not a time for us to answer questions or respond or debate with you. It's really an opportunity for you to be heard by this elected body. So you shouldn't expect us to answer any of your questions when you're up giving public comment. We also ask that you refrain from clapping or cheering or booing, using profanity, vulgar language, threats, or name-calling. We want to make sure that everyone, when they come to share their opinion, regardless of whether you agree with them or not, that they feel like they can be heard without being intimidated. So with that, we'll open up the first opportunity for public comment. And again, this is on action items. So these are items that are on our agenda. So share your name, the city that you live in, and what item you're referring to. And you can see right up here the clock, and you can see how much time you have left.
How you doing, everybody? Happy New Year, happy New Year for sure. But I would like to talk, I didn't have to look at the agenda because I was here early. I'd like to talk about the Garfield Park of the city getting a new roof for the gymnasium at Garfield Park. First of all, I would like to say, if the contract does not get to the $374,700, could y'all please look to revitalize the actual whole facility? Because y'all actually walking into that gym, it's kind of terrible, it's ugly, you know what I'm saying? Like, we want to talk about economic development equity. But if you go inside the Garfield Gym, it looks rundown. I mean, I know you guys know what a rundown gym looks like. I mean, people host all type of events and community events. Like, people host baby showers in there, people stay in poverty and they host baby showers in there, and it looks rundown. Like, you know, people talk stuff, you might have some good food at a baby shower, but then you be like, this is kind of ugly, I don't like the setting. I mean, I know what black people know what I mean by that. So I would like for you guys to really consider to the funds that you don't use on revitalizing the roof of the Garfield Park gymnasium, that you look to use some of those funds to revitalize and beautify that area. Because I sit there, I post up with a lot of dudes from the hood, I can name every hood on the South Side. I don't want to name the hoods, but I know a lot of people from that hood. Like, I really kick it with those guys, and we talk about a lot of different things. I even posted on my Facebook, because some of the people from that hood liked to post on Facebook. So I would like for you guys to consider revitalizing the gym if you guys don't exceed the contract amount for the gymnasium at Garfield Park. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Others wish to be heard on agenda items?
Hi, my name is Gloria Cook, I'm from the 2nd Ward, and I am here representing Grand Rapids Climate Coalition. And so one thing I do want to say is, I'm speaking also on the same agenda item. See Resolution 2 with the contract for Garfield Park. One thing I want to say is that we appreciate the conversations that we have had, the climate coalition has had with the parks and recreation, and we look forward to continuing that collaboration during this new year. But reading the plans to the Garfield Park, which includes new roofing, I was just wondering if there has been any consideration to not use oil-based roofing? So there are a number of other ways to do this, I have some information that I'm going to pass out. So this is on a product that uses recycled rubber and plastic to create a slate-like product. And then, of course, the other consideration is solar on the roof. Also, in any parking area, if there is going to be a roof over the parking, that that be considered solar, which I know is a sticky wicket when solar comes to Michigan. And that's about all I have to say, so I'm going to pass these out. I think there's enough copies, but it's an interesting idea. It's also, I don't know how economical, but it seems to be very weather resistant.
Okay, great, thank you, thanks. We'll make sure it gets to the right person. Yep, you can just give it to Commissioner Purdue. Alright, others wish to be heard on action items?
Good afternoon. Daniel Scott, longtime resident of the city. First of all, welcome to the new commissioners. I'm commenting on, I guess it's number 11, ordinance is to be adopted. Besides my name, of course, I'm also a follower of the Lord Jesus Christ. That's my real identity. From the Holy Scriptures, it says, "Let every soul be subject unto the higher powers; for there is no power but of God. The powers that be are ordained of God. Whosoever therefore resisted the power, resisted the ordinance of God. And they that resist shall receive to themselves damnation. For rulers are not a terror to do good works," and I would substitute policemen there. "For policemen are not a terror to do good works, not a terror to good works, but to the evil. Wilt thou then not be afraid of the power? Do that which is good, and you shalt have praise of the same. For they are ministers of God for thee for good. But if you do that which is evil, be afraid; for they bear not the sword in vain. For they are the ministers of God, avengers, to execute wrath upon them that do evil."
Madam Mayor.
"Wherefore you must needs be subject, not only for wrath, but also for conscience sake."
Can you hold off? Are you, go ahead, Commissioner Moody.
I would probably want to read the scripture, that's fine. But what does it have to do with the agenda that we're talking about?
I'm going to show my support for the police.
Okay.
He said the ordinance, but I was wondering where he was taking it as well. Alright, thank you, Commissioner.
Any increase to the funds for the police, I fully support. Because they deserve it, because God says they do. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. We're going to close that public comment period, and it'll take us to the approval of the minutes. These are approval of our minutes from our December 13th meeting. Commissioners, can I get a motion?
Some votes.
Support.
Alright, moved and supported, any questions or comments? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Alright, that will take us to petitions and communications.
First one is a communication received from Lucas Lever regarding the role of leaders in discussion and confrontation of unhoused health and safety.
That is received and filed.
Communications received 558 of them, opposing an ordinance to address downtown public safety issues.
That is received and filed.
And a communication received one of them, expressing support for an ordinance to address downtown public safety issues.
And that is also received and filed. Alright, that will take us to reports of city officers, and we have two items before us.
The first one is a comptroller's report for the period of November 30, 2022, through December 27, 2022, in the amount of $39,314,958.49.
That is received and filed.
And treasurer's report for the period of December 1, 2022, through December 27, 2022.
And that is also received and filed. Alright, next that will take us to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda, our items that we voted on earlier today in one of our standing committee meetings where there was a unanimous vote. So today, with one voice vote, we'll adopt those items. Commissioners, can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Some votes.
Support.
Alright, moved and supported, any questions or comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. This ordinance to be adopted is just a salary ordinance. Last time we adopted our collective bargaining agreement with our Police Officers Association and Sergeant Unit, and this is the corresponding salary ordinance to bring that into effect so that it can happen.
Alright, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Alright, this is a roll call vote today.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody.
Yes.
Commissioner Asasi.
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins.
Yes.
Commissioner Purdue. Commissioner Knight. Mayor Bliss.
Yes, and Commissioners, can I get a motion to give this immediate effect?
Support.
Alright, moved and, so moved, so moved, do I have support?
Support.
Moved and supported, any additional questions or comments? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Alright, that will take us to our city commission resolutions. We do have one resolution before us today, and this is a suspend the rules, so this is a walk-on item. To start, Commissioners, can I get a motion to suspend the rules?
Some votes.
Support.
Alright, moved and supported, all those in favor of suspending the rules say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Rules are suspended to consider this resolution.
It's a city commission resolution approving settlement in workers disability compensation agency matter involving plaintiff Kozminski.
Alright, can I get a motion?
Some votes.
Support.
Alright, moved and supported. Commissioner Esasi, you want to tell us about this?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I am going to read the information from the walk-on in the resolution, because I think that's important when we have a walk-on item. But I just wanted to highlight, you know, Officer Kozminski was killed in the line of duty, and this is over 15 years ago. So it's just important to note that sometimes cases involving employees and workers' compensation can take some time to resolve. So I wanted to give a little bit of,
Thank you.
beyond just the language in the resolution. So today, the litigation matter of Robert Kozminski, who is deceased versus City of Grand Rapids, a pending workers' compensation case, was presented to our city commissioner executive session. Settlement of this matter was recommended and improved in the full amount of $146,889.30, with the City of Grand Rapids paying $37,596 of that previous amount that I just noted. And its access insurance carrier, the accident fund, is paying that remaining amount, which is $109,293.30.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Alright, anything else, city attorney? Okay, alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Alright, that will take us to our city commission resolutions. We do have one resolution before us today, and this is a suspend the rules, so this is a walk-on item. To start, Commissioners, can I get a motion to suspend the rules?
Some votes.
Support.
Alright, moved and supported, all those in favor of suspending the rules say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Rules are suspended to consider this resolution.
It's a city commission resolution approving settlement in workers disability compensation agency matter involving plaintiff Kozminski.
Alright, can I get a motion?
Some votes.
Support.
Alright, moved and supported. Commissioner Esasi, you want to tell us about this?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I am going to read the information from the walk-on in the resolution, because I think that's important when we have a walk-on item. But I just wanted to highlight, you know, Officer Kozminski was killed in the line of duty, and this is over 15 years ago. So it's just important to note that sometimes cases involving employees and workers' compensation can take some time to resolve. So I wanted to give a little bit of,
Thank you.
beyond just the language in the resolution. So today, the litigation matter of Robert Kozminski, who is deceased versus City of Grand Rapids, a pending workers' compensation case, was presented to our city commissioner executive session. Settlement of this matter was recommended and approved in the full amount of $146,889.30, with the City of Grand Rapids paying $37,596 of that previous amount that I just noted. And its excess insurance carrier, the accident fund, is paying that remaining amount, which is $109,293.30.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Alright, anything else, city attorney? Okay, alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Alright, that will take us to our scheduled public hearings. We do have one scheduled public hearing before us today. This is a public hearing to consider a brownfield plan amendment for a project located at 974 Front Avenue Northwest. Notice of this public hearing was made pursuant to state law. So what we'll do is, we'll start with our Director of Economic Development, Mr. Gracia, he'll tell us about this item. And then we'll invite anyone who is here, who's a part of the project, to come and add any additional information. And then if you are here to be heard on this scheduled public hearing, I'll open up a public comment after that. Alright, Mr. Gracia?
Yes, good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a public hearing again for the project taking place at 974 Front Avenue Northwest, specifically seeking brownfield, local brownfield revolving fund support. Now, the project itself is, total construction cost is about $9.1 million, which will result in 16 market rate apartments. You can see the breakdown there of seven studios, seven one-beds, and two one-bed project. Is also, those units will be priced below the 100% AMI. In addition to that, this is, it will require the rehabilitation of 33,000 square feet of office space that will be new to that particular side of the river, and estimated to create 95 jobs with an average wage of $29 per hour. As we, as you know, any project that is seeking development support from our office is required to submit an inclusion plan. They have done so, and they are committed to seeking overall 10% or $907,000 of contracts to MBE, WB, or MLBE contractors. Again, this is the public hearing for supporting the local brownfield revolving loan fund program to reimburse their activities for demolition, some site prep, removal, and transportation of contaminated soils, asbestos abatement, and specialized foundations due to the project location. The project has also received other support from the West Side Corridor Improvement Authority, the West Grand Neighborhood Association, and the West Leonard Business Association as well. And also received support from the West Side Corridor Improvement Authority for grant. And also, the commission approved an Oprah exemption in May of 2022. This project also is part of our revitalization and placemaking grant program that we submitted last spring. And while we're still waiting to receive the grant agreement, it is one of those projects that we have selected to receive support. So, and the construction, again, to begin in the spring of '23 and complete in the spring of '24, so approximately one year of construction. And we do have a representative of the development team here to speak with you as well.
Okay, great. Hi, welcome.
Good afternoon, I'm James Lewis with Pinnacle Construction Group. Welcome to the new members of the commission, it's nice to see some of you here. Yeah, we're really excited about the redevelopment of the old Clipper Belt Laser Company, which is now Flexco Building. It was, it's a historic building on the river, built in, I think, right around 1910. We're renovating it to the National Park Service standards for historic reservations. So it'll be on the register and a historic resource, you know, for the city. We think it's a really beautiful building. You know, right now, it's been well vacant for the last 20 years and boarded up. And so we're, you know, it takes a lot of effort and a lot of creative financing to get a project like this through. So we thank you for your support and your continued support of the project. Do you have any questions?
Alright, let me see if we have any questions. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Lewis, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation, and we were, some of us were able to hear this previously in our brownfield meeting. But I just wanted to follow up, I see on yours, for the business incubator space and co-working, was it previously going to be retail space too, or, okay, I'm just forgetting that.
Yeah, no, it's always been business space. And yeah, we're mostly interested in smaller office tenants.
Okay.
So creating some sort of, it's not, I wouldn't call it a, like a co-working space, but an incubator space where there's shared amenities between some of the smaller tenants.
And that might potentially be those that are in your supply chain to you, is that, okay. I just wanted to pull that out a little bit. So it won't be tenants that you're looking for, but maybe that you're already currently working with and would utilize that space. Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks. Commissioners, any other questions? Commissioner Moody?
Yeah, thank you for this report. You have an estimate of 95 jobs created with an average wage of $29 per hour?
Yes, that's correct.
What are those job descriptions, or if that's something you can get to me later?
Yeah, it's really an average office salary worker, you know, of $65,000 a year, times the square footage of, you know, how many people per square foot of space that we come up with this idea.
And you'll be posting those jobs when the project is done or before the project is done?
So these aren't construction jobs during the project, this is once we lease out all the spaces and then have tenants, and then we will collect that information from the tenants.
Any minority contractors on your job, on your site?
Yes, there'll be minority contractor participation of at least 10%, although we're expecting more.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any additional questions? Alright, thank, oh, city manager?
And follow up to Commissioner Moody's, I think the value of the amount that's paid to minority contractors almost doubles the amount of eligible brownfield activities.
Alright, good, good observation. Alright, thank you. So if you are here to be heard on this public hearing, you're welcome to come forward. We ask that you share your name, the city that you live in, we'll give you up to three minutes to speak. And again, this is specific to this public hearing.
Lucas, 1st Ward. I actually didn't really prepare much for this, I just made some notes. Minority ownership of the businesses involved with the project that we're discussing is boasted to be 6%, but the population here consists of 47% minorities. Women here populate 52% of Grand Rapids, but only 2% of this project. And I didn't really look into the job claims, I just added it to the notes, because that sounded real sketchy. I could have come up with that with like 38 seconds of Googling and of calculator. So that's not great. The AMI rates are really what bothers me here, because if you look at the chart, it has under 100%, which means literally nothing. It could be 99%, and they've delivered what they said they were going to do, right? So this really seems like it should have a requirement for actual affordable housing, as should everything ever proposed, ever, period, in this city. The project cites a study from a real estate lobby firm as somehow justifying their aims. We all know we need 20% to 50% AMI at most to make a dent in the housing crisis. You keep approving and you keep promoting and pushing through these kinds of projects, and you ask very little profit sacrifice from the fat pockets that are involved, usually heavy investor-supported corporate entities, people that are going to make a big check in interest. I've said before, I prefer not to attack singular people. I think this sounds like a cool building. But we've got to do something about the overall greed problem supported by weak leadership and bad policy. And I'm going to keep highlighting the failure to push back and stop begging these people for business. You don't have to. This is a desirable place. So endless concessions don't really do anything, and this government really needs to step up and change the trend. In this room and in committees, and by going to Lansing to force the hand of the now democratically dominated state government, you can untether yourselves from any limitations. And I think we can use your help in that. I will use the extra time to point out that this hearing yep, is taking place way before the timeframe that you guys pitched to us last year when you talked about justifying the 2:00 PM meeting slot. You said that we wouldn't get to comments until after people had had a chance to get here. But right now, most people are getting ready to pick up kids from school or stuck at work, and I don't really believe in the research that you say you did to move this time. We're about to go into general public comment also well before anybody could have made it here based on the logic that the mayor mentioned, that the meetings would push this timing into a frame that they could make it. So I remain opposed to it, and I remain supportive of letting people have call-in comments. So, thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, others wish to be heard?
Mark from Grand Rapids. Well, here we go again. Another brownfield development being considered for big-time investors. When is it going to stop? As I said before, you can't create outside the design structure. I have no problem with them renovating this property. But they can get minority investors to invest in it, to build it. Don't take public money to put it in private hands. And the, the individuals who really can't afford any type of housing on the cold. It's not good. And trust me, y'all know it's not good. But hey, you keep donating money out to these private individuals, they go take it and do whatever they want to do with it. Because money talks. And this is going to keep, and until you stop it, it's going to continue to keep happening. Trust me, there's going to be another big-time developer that's going to look for brownfield money, find older populated properties, enter them into lavish HGTV-style dwellings that only the less than 1% can afford. I told you that before. I'll tell you that now, and I'm going to keep telling you that until you change your minds. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, others wish to be heard on this brownfield application?
It's Kai. So I'm trying to wrap my head around the imaginary-
Can you please start with your name and the city that you live in?
I did.
Okay.
Oh, thanks. Yes. Again, Kai, right? I wouldn't be here if I didn't live here, right? So I can't wrap my head around this imaginary job situation where they said, well, we're not talking about for construction. We're talking about the imaginary people who are going to flock to all of these micro offices, and then they are going to hire people at $29 an hour? And then he said, "In office work"? I work in office work. I don't make $29 an hour. So in what world, like, did you take stats from Cali? Did you take stats from bigger cities? I'm not understanding where, like, is it tech jobs? Is it jobs where they already need degrees to get in there? Because 29 is a big reach to say that's what you, minimum. That's a bit insane. So I'm trying to reason here. These people come up here, and they come up here with a plan, and they feel all Shark Tank-y, and, you know, they want to get their ID out there. They want to get their building built. So what do most people do when they do that? They lie on their resume, right? So they want this money. They're going to put these imaginary jobs up there, and then all these jobs are just going to be sucked up, and then it's just going to prosper, and it's just going to be amazing. But that's not reality, right? You're going to make all these micro offices that you're not going to lease out until well into a few years after the project's done. Your jobs are going to be baselining probably at $15 an hour because you're lucky if you get that around here, especially for office work. So I'm just so confused. If they're pitching this idea in order to get these funds to create this, then they should have to provide real-life numbers. They shouldn't be able to say, "Well, this is what I think is-" No. You find a project similar to yours, what you want to do, because a lot of people are doing this, right? Micro-business, micro offices. I see it up on Leonard. I see it everywhere. So people are doing it. So then you need to generate real numbers from that. What type of people are you going to appeal to? Because I heard him say that it's going to be his people moving into these offices when he was questioned. So what new people are you getting into these micro offices? What new jobs are you creating if you're just shuffling in some of your already people that you have in there? Like, and who is that truly appealing to? Because you said office work. That's a real big blanket. I've worked in several different types of office work to know that that's a real big blanket. And my pay being anywhere from $9 to almost $20 an hour. Never know 29. And if it's going to be a 29, it's going to be a BAMA, something that I'm going to need that most people ain't got.
All right, thank you. Thanks. Others wish to be heard on this brownfield application? All right, I think I'll invite Mr. Gracia back up. Maybe you can speak to some of the questions raised around job creation and jobs and pay and how we work with potential developers on bringing forward those recommendations and projections.
Sure. So what we typically do in our, what we do do at our office is we look back five years, and we survey all of those projects that are receiving support. And we report that out in our annual report. And I know that our last report, we were able to exceed all those job commitments that we're looking back the last five years. So we do survey each of those projects individually, and we go back to them and making sure that those commitments are being met and if, and where they are. It's also important to note that this particular, all of these programs that we bring forth here are reimbursable. They're reimbursable programs. They're not front cash. So the money has to be spent first in the performance base by the developer, and so they're making sure they spend the money, and then they're submitting for reimbursable costs for those eligible activities. In this case, we're talking about demolition, site preparation, transportation, and the removal of those contaminated soils, asbestos abatement, and specialized foundations.
All right, thank you. Let me see if any, Commissioner? See if there's any questions. Go ahead.
Could you, earlier you mentioned a number of SIDS and neighborhood associations and business associations who are in support of the project. Could you repeat that list?
Yeah, sure. So West Side Corridor Improvement Authority, West Grand Neighborhood, and the West Leonard Business Association.
And is it just a blanket support? Is there a community benefit agreement? Have they kind of provided additional comments around the project itself besides just kind of a show of support?
Yep, so they'll submit a letter, a formal letter of support as well. And we'll have conversations directly with the development team and owner of the property. And we encourage that and require them to do that to make sure that we can get support from them.
All right, Commissioner O'Connor?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's important to note, and I asked the city manager about this previously, I think we need a, you know, a little bit of more education about what brownfield is and why it exists and what, the way the tool works, and in a way that, you know, everyone can understand. Because I think there's a whole lot of confusion about what a brownfield is, why it exists, and how it actually works. And I, you know, I feel like that leads to some animosity from folks in the community about this being some sort of public giveaway when it's not. Like, so if you go back to like, and again, I'm not the economic development director, but I'm versed enough in economic development tools and understanding to understand how this works, right? Like, and maybe this isn't the time, and I've asked the city manager, I'd like to have this as a presentation from the economic development department at some point so that we can all have a better, we, all of us, including my colleagues and the public, can wrap their head around it. But I think just the baseline understanding of a brownfield is, you know, if I go out to Hudsonville and I take an old cornfield and I put houses on it, that's a greenfield site, right? I don't have to really do a lot of, there's no contamination for the most part. There's no underground. There's no asbestos. There's no things that you have to solve for before you can put a shovel in the ground. And if you come to the City of Grand Rapids, especially on a site like this, and again, I saw this presentation at the CIA. I don't know all the details of this site, but I can just imagine that this is a site along our river that's had development on it for the past 150-plus years where there's been all kinds of contamination and soil contamination and soil issues and foundation issues and buildings full of lead-based paint and all kinds of things that exist there. And if you read through the approval, there's a laundry list of activities which are eligible on this site. And so to, as an effort from the state legislature to help level the playing field, right? Like, I'm an urbanist. I want things to be built in the urban core. I'd like our farmland to remain farmland. But in order to compete with a site that has zero site prep to it, you have to spend money to get something to the point that it can actually function at that level. And so a developer has to come in and spend significant amount of resources often to bring a site into a level that creates parity with something that's a greenfield site. And they have to spend the money to remediate the negative activities and then are reimbursed based on tax capture over a period of time. This is also, again, I believe in historic preservation. This is a historic property. I know a number of people who've done historic redevelopments in our community, they cost a lot more. Not because the city implements it. I think there's a national standard and a state standard by which you have to operate that increases the cost for redevelopment. These are challenging projects. And so in order to give these projects an opportunity to compete with projects that are just, you know, I don't want to see another mall built on a, you know, a four-lane divided highway in Granville. That's not what I, that's not what this community needs, wants, or deserves. But in order to do that, we have to create a playing field that allows a developer to come in and be able to make this type of investment because it is significantly, it costs significantly more, and it's significantly more challenging and significantly more complex. And so just, I feel like we, you have to then expend those dollars as someone doing a project to be able to get to that point, and then you get reimbursed over a period of time. I give $0 to anyone. The City of Grand Rapids gives $0 to these folks upfront. This is not just, this is not just a cash handout to someone. These are dollars that are expended and are repaid back at an amortized rate over a period of time. And that is, you use that to build your pro forma, to be able to justify financing, to justify investment, to justify all kinds of things to make a project work. So I'm just, the brownfield is not, it's a very positive tool and something that we are fortunate to have in an urban environment such as Grand Rapids to be able to give ourselves a chance to compete, not with our rural neighbors, but our suburban neighbors and our core-ring suburb neighbors. So I just, this is an important tool, and, you know, I appreciate the investment that you're making to be able to redevelop a challenging project on our riverfront and hopefully continue to reactivate our river.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. And city manager, go ahead. I know at Economic Development Project Team today, we did have an overview. It's probably worthwhile to do it with this entire body and then to add some information every time we have a public hearing. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to reemphasize that today. Staff spent maybe 20 minutes going over the, doing the project team overview of many of the incentive tools. Brownfield was one, but we'll certainly, as we, as today, have a discussion at our regular meeting prior to a public hearing so the public can be more informed about it. But it is available online if anybody wanted to go back and look at that recorded economic project team meeting.
Thank you. All right, any final questions or comments? Commissioner?
I appreciate all the comments that everybody has given so far. One of the things that just stuck out to me immediately, of course, was the job creation and the wages. To the comment that was made, I have not seen an office job pay $29 an hour unless you're moving up into the C-suite. So I'd be really interested on how you came up with that number and the number of jobs that are available as well as the MLBE representation. Have you already started reaching out to minority businesses for this? As I saw listed on a document earlier, there are not that many minority businesses that are registered as an MLBE. So how are you going to meet those numbers to receive the discount that is available for this project?
All right, thank you. Mr. Gracia or Mr. Lewis, do you want to come up and respond to that? So questions about the percentage for the inclusion plan as well as maybe a little more detail in the projected numbers? I know, Mr. Gracia, you already spoke to that. If you have additional detail.
Yeah, so specifically the inclusion plan numbers, so all of these, we set those goals for the applicant, and then they do go out to bid, and then we do follow up with them again to see where they have come in at those particular areas. I'll have Mr. Lewis speak specifically about their engagement process, but we also help with that as well in referring them to other minority contractors that have done projects since our inclusion plan came into effect. And we also help them get in front of organizations such as Construction Allies in Action and as well as West Michigan Minority Contractors for those bidding opportunities as well.
Yeah, so one of the advantages of having a very difficult project to work on is it takes a long time. So we've been meeting over the summer with a number of potential minority subcontractors and micro-local subcontractors as well. And it's not my role in the company, so I don't know exactly off the top of my head who we all have met with. But the list in the inclusion plan does include many of the people we have met with already. And, yeah, the meetings have gone positively, and we're expecting to expand the group of subcontractors that we would typically, a larger pool of contractors than we typically would go out to bid with.
All right, thank you. All right, any final questions or comments? All right, well, I'll close that scheduled public hearing, and that will be referred back to our committee of the hall. All right, that will take us to our last opportunity for public comment. You are welcome to come forward. This is public comment on any other item. We ask that you share your name, the city that you live in. You'll be given up to three minutes to speak.
How you doing, everybody? My name is DeAndre Jones, known as D. Jones in the trenches for sure. But I'd like to say again, Happy New Year. Hope nobody gets killed by the police because I don't want to have to stand up for a bunch of citizens this year. And I'm not saying I don't want to stand up for the people, but I don't want to have to just be in a position where I have to put myself in dangerous situations potentially because I have to stand up for what I believe is just and right, even though people might disagree with it, like people that love the police and think that the other officer is a hero. But I'd like to say, first of all, that I'm very proud of the progress I've been making with esports. Right now, I'm working with Kent District Libraries to bring esports to Kent County. We have 20 libraries across Kent County, but we have 14 libraries that had the capacity to have an esports lab or lounge at the Executive Branch at Comstock Park, which I got to check out and get a tour of. It was pretty cool. We actually have six rooms at the Executive Branch to actually do video game development, do graphic arts design for video games. I was looking at Twitch for jobs. It's an organization that does outsources for video games. They have jobs, senior-level jobs for $287,700. Like, we can start now. The thing is about it is we're starting now. Like, when I leave city commission, I have to go connect with the Kent District Libraries and a billion-dollar corporation that's actually going to help them with the feasibility and the whole steps forward of doing this. My vision is coming to fruition. The great things that I'm looking to do for the city, even being able to present esports to Grand Rapids Public Schools on the 23rd. That head athletic director asked me, and I'll be able to do great things for our community, for students. Even if you don't like me, I don't plan on staying here in the City of Grand Rapids. I'm going to know I'm going to be rich one day. I want to be in Dubai or somewhere on the island. I don't plan on growing, having a family here, but you probably will. But your son or your daughter might grow up, and she might want to do video game designer or gamer or want to stream. And that black person, that young D. Jones, that passionate individual that never gave up on his dreams and his goals and his aspirations is going to be that person for your student or that, or that individual or that, or that next-level business leader or that visionary. I'll create that spark. As in Tupac Shakur said, "I might not be the person that changed the world, but I'll create-" I'll create that spark for the person that will. And I believe I'll be able to contribute to the economy, I'll be in the big rooms, I was gonna say the city never invited me to nothing, but I wanna thank the Urban League 'cause I'll be at that corporate breakfast. So you'll see, young black D. Jones, probably with a nice trench coat, blue fade with a part, looking real good, I know I'm handsome, I know I'll be looking nice, but I'll be there, and I can't wait to show the city what I do, 'cause I'm tired of feeling like the little bro, and I know I'm the big dog, I know I'm gonna do big things. I appreciate it, thank you, everybody have a good year.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jones. All right, others wish to be heard?
So my public comment is more toward what Commissioner O'Connor shared, pretty much stating that we are mad and outraged over something we don't understand, we do understand, that's why we're mad about it. So you allow these developers who can afford $13 million, $9 million projects to come up here and get brownfield redevelopment money, dollars, reimbursable, whatever it may be, but they can afford it, especially when they're charging $13.35 for a studio, $15.40 for a one-bedroom, and $18.75 for a two-bedroom on a riverfront. I don't know what you mean when you say urban, but a lot of people in this city can't afford that, especially on a riverfront, they're gonna make the money back, whether they get this money or not. So we do have a right to be outraged, we get it, we're not dumb, we understand what's going on. And then as far as, I mean, we have these same redevelopers come up here every couple weeks, few weeks, to get these dollars, they can afford it, they don't need our money, they don't need the city's money. And a lot of it can be invested in affordable market rate or below-market rate units for our people in the city where we actually need it. So again, a lot of these projects are being focused around downtown, the northwest side, northeast side, but what about the southeast side? So I think the focus, again, still needs to be on who needs it most, and it's not these developers who can afford $18 million, $9 million projects.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. All right, others wish to be heard?
My name is Joyce P. Gibson, and I'm running for governor in 2026. Sometimes I find that I'm accepting things in life as, as if I'm in a whirlwind or a tornado. Proposal number three is one of those tornadoes. Proposal number three invites you to associate and define when their bodies are, are beginning to change, when they need to be learning in school. If you're a teenager listening to this presentation, I would ask that you wait until you're 20 before you ba, before you begin to experiment in genital surgery? Abortion. 60% of the women getting abortions have children at home already. This disturbs me, it asks me, it asks me about the primary contributor to the family, the mother, the woman. She doesn't wanna be a mom anymore, she doesn't wanna be a mother anymore. This upsets my soul to the core. This means that we have to redefine the family, reevaluate family priorities, and redefine family meaning. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Others wish to be heard?
Okay, Daniel Scut again, longtime resident of the city and, most importantly, a follower of the Lord Jesus Christ. Holy Scripture says, if I can read one verse, "In all of life, give thanks, for this is the will of God in Christ Jesus concerning you." And what I wanted to do last time, Mayor, was just give public thanks to this body, including you, and the commissioners that were here, and the three new commissioners I can now thank publicly, for your service. I know we disagree, but I still appreciate, based on the scripture I read earlier, that I am to respect you, and I do. In fact, I pray for you every day, not by name, but by a group. And again, if you ever have any personal requests, or your family, or your ministries, or your businesses, please contact me. So thank you, thank you for your service. Secondly, thank you for your leadership, and I wanna thank the staff that's here, and perhaps watching on the video, for setting these meetings up. I know it's a lot of work, and I appreciate you as well. Again, I appreciate the police. Police chief, gentlemen, thank you for your service, and I appreciate you very much. I also wanna thank the Lord for Chris Becker, our county DA, one of the three in the state that wants to enforce the 1931 law that's still in our constitution that calls abortion murder. By the way, I wanna thank the Lord for what he's doing at 320 East Fulton. Throughout 2021 and the first week of 20, 2022, the first week of 2023, 43 precious babies have been saved at that place from being murdered. And perhaps one of them will grow up to find the cure for cancer. Perhaps one of them will be a godly mayor of Grand Rapids. Yes, 43 children, and there's gonna be more, and I'm told by the inside sources that business is way down. So maybe this will be the year 320 East Fulton is shut down. The whole city will be blessed from that, because when there's life, there is blessing. Finally, I wanna thank my fellow citizens here, Lydia, Lucas, John, Donnie, Mark, Christian, for expressing your thoughts. I know we disagree on a lot of things, but I respect you as well, thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Good day.
Time's up. Others wish to be heard?
Hi, my name is Lindsay Gomez, I live in Grand Rapids in Ward Two. I'm here to address the proposed ordinance that would criminalize our unhoused community members. I'm a licensed clinical therapist and social worker and have been working with the unhoused for five years in the city. I wanna first acknowledge that those who are unhoused are also considered city residents, community members, and our neighbors. Research has shown that those who are homeless experience harassment nearly every day, with more than one in three identifying being hit, kicked, urinated on, verbally harassed, abused, sexually and physically assaulted, not to mention the ongoing reports of sexual and physical violence within Grand Rapids shelters. This ordinance suggested that those who are unhoused seek shelter. If shelters were safe and adequate, they'd be full. So to those Grand Rapids residents and business owners who find the presence of the unhoused uncomfortable or unsafe as they come and go from work, seek to enjoy a hot meal at their favorite restaurant, or receive services from a downtown business, I want you to acknowledge the privilege of only having to experience this fear and discomfort of feeling unsafe for minutes at a time, while those who live unhoused live in fear 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. Not to mention local business owners now downtown taking pictures of them and sharing it with the public to, quote, "show what we are dealing with." Homelessness is caused by a lack of affordable housing, unlivable wages, lack of employment opportunities, and the rise in cost of living, and systemic racism and oppression. Those arrested and criminalized for being unhoused will only face more barriers to accessing housing and employment, thus perpetuating the cycle of homelessness. A study conducted across 14 states found that 79% of formerly incarcerated people and their families were denied housing due to a criminal conviction, same as this ordinance would do. Additionally, research shows it costs taxpayers $31,000 a year to criminalize a single homeless person, while the yearly cost of providing housing is $10,000. And in the Urban Institute's evaluation, researchers found that program participants who were given housing opportunities showed fewer interactions with law enforcement, shorter stays in jail, shelters, and city-funded services. I'd love to see these 50-plus large corporations, high-end restaurants, stores, hospitals, hotels, banks, and salons who have signed in support of this ordinance to really get to know the people staying outside of their business as they perceive as a nuisance. Why not get to know them, train them, employ them, give them livable wages so they can join our community in the way we live and work?
Thank you, your time's up.
These are humans and people like you and me, and deserve safety, not fines and criminal records.
All right, others wish to be heard?
Good afternoon, Lucas, First Ward. Our three new commissioners ran for office willingly, knowing the state of affairs in the nation and our city. Thank you for stepping up. Mr. Robbins, you responded to my intense public heat and personal challenge to that camera by asking that we have a little beer summit. You took away a huge list of questions from the community, and even if I might disagree with some of your answers, you engaged. I will always be angry about the unforgivable dishonesty that contributed to Mr. Repart's loss, but you've shown that we can try to have a working relationship while you work on treating the stain of that dirty money. Ms. Knight, I don't know you, but I look forward to knowing you, because anybody who manages to defeat the insider establishment candidate in every single precinct is ordained to make change. Ms. Purdue, I've only met you a couple of times, I think I was drunk one of those times, but I've been very impressed. You also accomplished a victory against the status quo puppet of the DeVos's and the Chamber. That means a lot to me and gives me a lot of hope for the direction of this government. We've gained two women of color that are positioned to do some great things. This community will support you if you stick your necks, necks out and make the long overdue changes happen. Ms. Usasi, I mean when I said before, I apologize for the perceived sexism of my shorthand, and I look forward to getting to know you, but I expect you to be out loud with your determination for progress, and if you shout it, I'll echo it. Mr. Moody, when I criticized you and challenged you to explain your views and choices, you invited me to chat. I still don't see eye to eye on some things, but you have my respect for engaging like you did. Mr. O'Connor, I'm glad the Christmas card I dropped off for you made a difference in the stalemate. I'm looking forward to having coffee in our little powwow later this week, and I'm hoping to bring a hatchet that I can bury at least partially. Mayor Bliss, thanks for hosting this cast of characters, including myself, who come here to demand the best city for all. I am looking forward to our chat next week, and I appreciate that you've taken time to engage even with big, loud political thespians like me. All that said, many of you know I'm a tough customer, and as referenced in my letter received at the top of today's agenda, I've got no more patience for BS and very little interest in incrementalism while we watch some people suffer at the hands of the heartless or corrupt. I believe that we can appreciate each other while being willing to have big fights about important things. Let's see if we can make 2023 the year to keep it real, tackle the bad, celebrate the good, and see some spirited arguments forge an even more fantastic city. And I got 20 seconds left. That was the highest word count, John, from you in a year of me coming here, and I cannot tell you how much I appreciated it. That's the kind of reaction and explanation and engagement every single one of you should be giving this room anytime you have the chance. We can disagree on the details of your perception versus ours, but keep doing more of that. Whoever pulled that string or asked you to do it, or if you decided to do it, let's keep doing that.
Mr. Leibert, thanks, your time's up. All right, others wish to be heard?
Mark from Grand Rapids. For the woman who was saying that, who spoke earlier, remember this. If it weren't for the doctor requesting a lady from Georgia to get an abortion, she would be dead. It saved her life from a ruptured womb, remember that. Welcome to three new commissioners here. I give luck to each and every one of you, because there'll be times where we would have to yell, "God help us all." Now, I'm gonna give these two o'clock meetings four times. And at the fourth time, it's there, very little engagement, you gotta move it back to the evening, because something like this will happen, trust me. And let's not hope this year won't be like last year, where we have more chaos in this It was not good last year, y'all know it, I know it. All I want is very little trouble in Grand Rapids. I don't wanna be on the map for more hijinks, even though it might happen, I wanna keep that a minimum. I want these, I want the individuals who represent this city to listen to what the people have to say, and then you can make your own decisions. Because, again, we are your boss, not the other way around. Remove J. Edgar Hoover's name from the FBI building, remove George Wallace's name from the title of Moby, Alabama, and justice for Patrick Leoria, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
My name is Vee Mahaji from the Third Ward, and I'm here to speak on the proposed ordinance to further criminalize our unhoused community. It is illogical to penalize people who are forced to carry out life-sustaining activities on the street and in public spaces when our community lacks alternative resources. It is not lost on the community that the city ultimately does not care about what resources are provided, as long as the end result is moving unhoused persons out of public sight. There is a clear moral issue with punishing someone for carrying out life-sustaining activities in public when there are a clear lack of alternatives. People who are already suffering are being punished further for suffering. The criminalization of homelessness is aimed at the visual ramifications, not the root causes. Not only does it fail to address the underlying causes, but it further undermines the challenges of homelessness. Living on the streets means constantly being vulnerable to the elements, to illness and hunger, and to the, to the very group who should be there to protect you, the police. Criminalization policies give local law enforcement free rein to apply consequences, often arbitrarily and violently. By bringing unsheltered people into frequent unnecessary contact with law enforcement officials, criminalization invites avoidable dangers into their lives. Criminalization fills jails up with people who are more likely to be victims of crime than perpetrators, and with people who need treatment which jails are not equipped to provide for mental and substance, substance use disorders. And most importantly, criminalization does not reduce the number of people experiencing homelessness, it breaks connections people have had made with providers, and exacerbates homelessness and the conditions that lead to it, such as health problems and racial disparities. One of the most effective ways to immediately make life safer for our unsheltered is to dismantle the systemic criminalization of homelessness, reducing the number of interactions between the unhoused and police, reducing the number of local ordinances, penalizing life-sustaining activities, and replacing criminalization with tactics and services. For the unhoused, especially those without shelter, replacing criminalization tactics with critical, critical support is key. Support efforts reduce the likelihood of unsheltered people coming into contact with law enforcement, restore a level of dignity not usually afforded to people without homes, reduce the length of time spent living outside, and protects a person from the harsh conditions of unsheltered living. The current cultural moment presents an opportunity to implement changes and come together as a community to pool our collective resources and aid in quality of life opportunities for our most vulnerable. There is a better way to respond to homelessness, and it starts with collaboration, not criminalization. We must treat homelessness as an, as a housing and health crisis, not a problem for the criminal justice system to solve. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your comments. All right, others wish to be heard?
Al Fruit, First Ward, live downtown. Back in the spring, the DID did a special assessment for residents who lived downtown for $120. We were told that then, at that time, there were a number of residents that spoke against that, and the main concern was, we didn't know how the money was gonna be spent, we weren't told how the money was gonna be spent, but we were told if we give, pass the assessment, we'll get a seat at the table. The assessment was due in August, we still don't have a seat at the table. Now, this comes up for renewal come another couple of months, the DID is gonna ask for renewal of this $120 per resident. We really would like a seat at the table, so we have some say in how this money is being spent. Another issue, sidewalks. Last, a couple weeks ago- Last, a couple weeks ago, we had a pretty good snowstorm here, lasted for about three or four days. If you tried walking in front of the public museum, or the art museum, rather, you couldn't. It was covered with snow. The part of the sidewalk that has snowmelt is blockaded with wood TV8 barricades, making sure nobody gets near the windows. That's the part with snowmelt. The rest of it, I'm understood, is, belongs to the museum. They need to shovel that, it needs to be accessible to those who are challenged on sidewalk, and walking, maybe on a wheelchair, a walker, older folks, even if younger folks. It's slippery, it's icy, that needs to be fixed. Whoever's responsible, and I understand from what I've been told, it is the museum. Crosswalk, Fulton and Monroe, that intersection was down all summer. Those of us that lived near it loved it being down, we loved the hole, it kept the motorcycles away. However, there are no crosswalks painted there now. They came in, repainted a couple of things there, they put turnarrows in, but they forgot to paint the crosswalks. We'd really like those put back in. And lastly, for all the young people that have spoken earlier today, it is really great to see the young people involved in politics and caring. It's a great thing. We need to keep that up. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Good afternoon, Viola, from Grand Rapids. America is in trouble. We are watching the unraveling of a God-fearing society, a nation in moral chaos. The Apostle Paul gave clear warnings that dangerous times would come, when evil men and deceivers would become worse and worse, deceiving and themselves being deceived, and that lawlessness would increase. Deception and lawlessness are the marks of these dangerous times. In a time when the deception is great, how do we know when we have politicians, groups, and religious organizations all claiming to be on the side of what is right and just? You see, deception is not dressed in horns and a pitchfork. It comes disguised, it's seductive, and its intention is to mislead and lure away from the truth with a lie that looks and sounds right. There is something evil in sinister at work here, a people that have been seduced and have deviated from the truth. When you move away from the truth, your perspective becomes corrupt and distorted, a people that call evil good and good evil. They present themselves as moral while they commit immoral acts. The destruction of the family, the slaughter of our innocent, they campaign for the lawless and launch an assault on our police, a culture that has made martyrs and idols of their criminals and worship them. They claim to want to end racism, yet themselves spew hatred and violence on those that don't look or think like them. They glorify evil and hate that which is good. Truth should be the standard by which we measure all things. We need to tear down every lie and false accusation against our police, and we need to put the responsibility and the blame where it belongs, on those that commit evil deeds, those that have no regard for laws, and who intentionally disobey and put our police in highly dangerous and intense situations that they did not create. Our police have been given the sword to restrain evil. It's their God-given role. When you restrain our police, you lose evil on our streets. In these dangerous times, we need people who will stand for righteousness, people who will stand on the side of truth at all costs. I stand with Officer Christopher Schur, and I stand with the Grand Rapids Police Department. Thank you.
All right, others wish to be heard?
Hello, I'm Libby from the Second Ward of Grand Rapids. And Commissioner Knight, I just want to welcome you. I was able to brag this Christmas with family coming into town that, from City Commission all the way up to the Executive Office in DC, I have mostly women representing me, and I was kind of proud of that, because, you know, some of us didn't think we'd ever really live in a time where women could be so accessible in the government, so, thank you. I'm also here today to let you know that this weekend, I got a text from my neighbor while I was at church, letting me know that they had found a person in the park down the street. Sorry. And a little investigating, this is one of the people that frequently stays in the park, doesn't have a home, he's been around Wilcox Park for probably four or five years, and he died in the park without a home. I don't know if he died of exposure, or if he had a heart attack, or what, but that doesn't matter, he didn't have a home. And nobody should die like that. And I still don't see you guys doing anything. I mean, maybe you are that I'm not seeing, but this is unacceptable. I mean, I look, I frequently go through the agenda pack, it's too much for me to actually look through all of it, but I saw the proposals or the plans, I think it's new development, is it, no, rebuilders, community rebuilders, I think it is, has, and the idea of having smaller shelters around the city and around the area for people, so they're not all stuck in one big building, that was such a wonderful idea. Why can't we do that? Why aren't we looking into the, I mean, they know what they're doing, they are a great organization despite the fact that I couldn't quite remember their name. There are a lot of plans and ideas out there, but they need the kind of power and the muscle that you guys have, not, and when we don't have it, I don't have it, I have no power pretty much. But yeah, that's kind of what I wanted to say today, and, you know, I really hope that we don't see this as a normal thing in Grand Rapids, that people are dying in our parks because we're not giving them a place to stay, and we are giving, and I know they're gone now, we don't need that kind of development so much in Grand Rapids anymore. When the brownfield plans were first enacted around here, it was when downtown was dead. We couldn't get people to come downtown. That's why we, that's why those things weren't acted in Grand Rapids. We are past that time. I would really encourage them, move out to Cedar Springs, see how much business that brings you.
Thanks, Libby. It was a tragedy.
Before my time starts, real quick, you're allowed to be on your phone while you're on duty, sir. Put that thing away. Anyways, it's Kai. Oh, so disrespectful, you started my time. Anyways, I got five minutes before I can go get my kids, thanks two o'clock meetings, but I will be sure to always be here. You know, one thing that stuck with me, Bliss, was last meeting, you were like, oh, man, reminiscing and all the great things everybody did, and I think it was Washington, you said, you walked around your burning city, and you guys said to yourselves, oh, my gosh, what are we gonna do to make the change? You know how long ago that was? Years, right? And Patrick died years after that. So, you sat and you walked around our burning city, I sat on my phone watching our burning city, saying, about time, but wrong people doing it. Anyway, I'm just so curious, on what legacy you think you're gonna lead if you couldn't even make any little bit of changes from then, when people rioted about a man that wasn't even from their city, to now, dealing with what Schur's lawyers just filed a motion to drop his charges? This city is sick. Y'all are sick. Y'all are sick. I don't, I don't know what else to say, but get help, like, I don't, I don't, mental illness is real, and clearly, our police union is mentally ill, our officers mentally ill, lazy, tired of being here, I don't know, he's still over there holding whatever device it is that he's holding. It's getting tiring to see you guys stretch your necks to do things like moving meetings to 2:00 PM because they help who? Second shifters? Are you so that out of touch that you believe a two o'clock meeting would help a second shift person that goes in at, between the hours of two and four? For people who have to pick up their kids at three? I'm gonna be a little late. But luckily, my kids go to a school whose teachers are like, hell, yeah, Kyra, tell them, tell them all the things, even though they don't listen. So, Bliss, I want you to go home, and I want you to think about all the changes you've done, that you said to yourself when you walked around our burning city with all those old cop cruisers of burning, old cop cruisers burning. Anyways, think about those changes you cried about, making, and then think about that you did not make them, and then think about how much time you got left, and then think about the legacy that you're gonna make. I'm so ashamed to have voted for you.
All right, others who wish to be heard?
Old cruisers. All right, others who wish to be heard?
That's not premeditated.
Casey from the Third Ward. These meetings are more accessible for who? Because first shift is seven to three, and then second shift is three to 11, and then third shift is 11 to seven, in which case they have to get out, stay a couple hours, and then go to sleep so they can get up for work again, or get out, go to sleep, and then get up for a couple hours so they can go to work. Either way, two o'clock, who, I'm, who? Who? Not first, second, or third shifter, so, was that the wheelchair-accessible people, or was that the people that wanted to call in, that you were doing this for? Want to talk about the lead water. I've came up here several times and talked about my concern with the lead where I live, the letter that I get in the mail annually saying, you know, boil your water, run it for five minutes first if you're gonna use it cold, et cetera, right? So, you guys, we went out to the, you know, you were having commission meetings out, right? And then you sent all the water specialists after us on the way out, because you were getting like, a lot of heat about the lead water, like, a lot, to the point that you had to address it. So, you sent some specialists out, so Sam, the water specialist in Grand Rapids, me and her emailed back and forth for a little while, but she said, the letter, just send it to me. And then she said, oh, that letter, that's just one we have to generate and just send out annually to the people in that zip code, it's just, it's just protocol. Yeah, Sam, that's the problem. She doesn't want to email anymore. Then you put on the lead, we have a lead water resource, apply here if you live in this zip code. Great, I did, I applied, and you know what Paul, the lead specialist, and the community engagement specialist told me? He said, unless your kids are under five, ooh, see, the sources are just so limited. And then I said, really, Paul, not even a, not even a filter? Nothing? And then he said, you know, you just seem mad. So, moving on from the water and the madness, we keep on getting a lot of backlash from you and from people who do not agree, and from people commenting in the public comment section, talking about how we're so angry and we're so mad, and it must be because we need to get a job and educate ourselves and get some morals and be stand-up individuals. The problem is, we're mad because we're doing all of those things, and you're still not listening, we're still not seeing any change. This, this is the aftereffect. Mad is the reaction to, to what, after we've already done those things you've suggested, and then we're still at this point, still no clean water for me. And then lastly, on that public comment section, you stop everybody here from saying damn, or, or anything, anything even, you know, remotely close. Have you read the public comment section, like, during the live, what people say? Like, the threads, like, they go all the way in. Do you, is there any, like, filter for that, or is that where we just get to go completely all the way? Like, they won't give a curse, but you can say, they should die, and all this extra stuff, but we're, we're so mad, and we should just tighten up, right? Happy New Year.
All right, others wish to be heard?
My name is Donnie, and I'm a Grand Rapids native. It's a new year. New year means new opportunities, right? New year means that we can bring this new energy that we're trying to create for change. But one of the consistence here is, is that people come up here just asking for resources, and what they get instead is lateral oppression. What they get instead is MD handouts. We're not looking for that. We're actually looking for anything that you can give and muster up, because we're not the ones in the seat. We're not the ones with the power that can write the check, that can send the checks or keep the checks coming to make whatever programs required so that people don't fall asleep and die outside tonight. I eat here, I work here, I sleep here. We respond, we come here and we ask you for more resources, and your responses are, well, you can do this, this, and this. What if that is something we've already done? What if that is something that has been transpiring for decades now? What I'm saying is, is that there are programs here that aren't helping everyone. Regardless of how you feel about them, they're not helping everyone. And if everyone's not being helped, what is the equation that's going to do that? And we need to be showing forth effort, right? But where is that effort? Where is that effort needed? For decades, it's been said, the southeast side, the 49507, right? So, how come we're still coming here saying that disparity is still large? There's still a rather large disparity between one section of your city with the rest. These meetings need to be easily accessible by the public, easily acceptable handicap. They don't need to be put in very complicated, hard places or hard times in order to be reached. 2:00 PM during the week isn't easy. There needs to be more resources. We only have a certain number of places that'll accept shelter, then make more places, right? You have the power to do that. There's people starving, give more food. Justice for Patrick Leoya.
All right, others wish to be heard?
My name is Evan, I live in Grand Rapids. I am also a clinical social worker here at a nonprofit, and I wanted to speak to the issue of criminalizing homelessness. I wanted to just, I guess, point to one of the core values of social work that we utilize a lot, which is harm reduction, as opposed to criminalization or absentee-based practices for whatever it is you're discussing. My colleagues spoke to a number earlier, I wish I brought more numbers, that it is much, much cheaper for the city to work on sustainable, long-term housing for people than it is to work on criminalizing just trying to live, and just trying to be in this world with the rest of us. So, I would just encourage the city to, I guess, think about spending more time and effort on fighting what those services can be for people, looking into the services that the city currently has, who work with the population of people experiencing homelessness, ask from them what they think would be helpful, what they've already been doing. It's likely that they've had something in place for many years that you may not be aware of, and I would just encourage you to look into that side of things more, in supporting people rather than criminalizing their way of just getting by. So, I wanted to speak to that, and then, to be honest, this is my first city council meeting I've ever been to, and I wanted to just make a comment that I think that there's a lot of people in the room, particularly who come from a lot of privilege, such as myself, especially white males in the room, who I think could spend more time listening than speaking and justifying their ends of things. So, I would just encourage that, that's all.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right, I'm gonna close that public comment period, and I will turn to my colleagues, and I will start down here on this side with one of our new commissioners. Commissioner Perdue?
Good afternoon, all. Well, it's my first meeting, first day. Thank you all, colleagues, for your warm welcome. Thank you to many of you all for your warm, your warm welcome. Yeah, we'll have a fun four years ahead of us. I think a lot of you captured the sentiment correctly in saying, a lot of hard work, a lot of tough issues to tackle, but we're in this together, and so I'm excited to serve you and to work with you in this way. I lead from a place of listening and curiosity. I'm a both-and thinker, I look for solutions. Born and raised in the Third Ward, still reside there, obviously will stay there, and so when I- And so when I think about disparities, when I think about the big issues that we're talking through, I said this through my campaign, I'll say here because it's true, that I'm not interested in talking point politics. I'm interested in what works. I don't care where the idea generates from, right? And as a Third Warder, I have a lot of personal skin in the game and will our solutions actually work or not. So that is kind of my approach to leadership and my commitment to you all. Want to thank you all for your engagement. 600 responses around this housing issue in the last, I think, week or so since the last agenda. And so I'm always inspired by folks of all ages who take time out of our busy schedules and days and many commitments to engage in public issues like this that are bigger than who we are as individuals. I believe in our collective agency. I believe in our collectivism and just am very much looking forward to you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sessi.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome, new colleagues. Hopefully it was a good first day. Try to be mindful of what are some of the things that I wish I would have been told or remembered, things that have been helpful to me. So I look forward to serving with all of you, but especially welcome to the three of you. I just want to say thank you to the city staff that presented at our committee of the whole meeting where we had a briefing as it related to really the history, kind of the deep history. So Ms. Behrens and Ms. Bohatch sharing both what, what was the history in Grand Rapids as it related to shelter, to housing, homelessness experience, to rapid rehousing, really kind of a, a full review. So if you didn't have a chance to watch that, their, that time today was a good presentation. And I think, I said this earlier, would be supportive of continuing that look at a holistic approach to how we are, you know, a lot of times connecting and coordinating, advocating for more services for individuals. And services, not, not just more, but things that are data-driven and also impactful and things that might be different than what we've done in the past. And I just want to say also, thank you, I don't know if James is here, but Mr. Herr and then also our city attorney. Thank you both for, and there's Phil too, just working through some issues as it related to a commission meeting that was previous in 2021 with some neighbors in the Second Ward. So I appreciate all your efforts and your work to try to get that resolved, especially during holidays and things like that. Thanks.
Thanks for saying that. Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I too want to welcome our new colleagues to the city commission. Look forward to, to working hand in hand with each and every one of you. I know we won't always agree, but I know that, and I hope we can have a relationship where we can disagree agreeably and continue to always put the needs of the city and the residents first. I too just want to say thanks to James Hurt and the Public Services Department. I know since the last time we were together, we got the, you know, the great blizzard of 2022 happened and so that was right around the Christmas holiday. So I know that there were a lot of folks working through the holiday and probably away from their family at a time when that was probably something they'd like to have probably woken up on Christmas Day with their, their, their family and children, but probably were out plowing snow to make sure we could travel around to see our families. So thanks to, to making that sacrifice for the city and for our, our residents and people who are visiting Grand Rapids.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Moody?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank everybody for coming out this afternoon. I do feel it's very important that in the year 23 that we work on housing and homelessness. I think that should be a priority that's on our list for this year. I also think it's important that we continue to deal with lead poisoning in, in paint and in water, if it's such existing. We need to get to the bottom of that ASAP. I'd like to thank the two new commissioners who are here today and appreciate the fact that I'm going to get to know each and every one of you. I've had the privilege of meeting and talking with Commissioner Perdue down there, who I strongly believe is going to be a great advocate for the city of Grand Rapids and for the Third Ward. So I look forward to us connecting and taking care of some serious responsibility. To that, I would say Happy New Year, but I'm not going to say Happy New Year. I'm going to say let's get ready and get started to do some work in this new year.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Rapids?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say thank you to everyone who came out. We really appreciate the engagement on many of these issues that, as you know, are very complicated and take a lot of time and assessment from multiple angles. So I, for one, don't take any of it for granted, any of the comments that you bring, the knowledge, the data, it's all stuff that I do take to heart. So appreciate all the warm welcomes from my new colleagues and congrats again to Commissioner Perdue and Commissioner Knight as well. I know I look forward to working with both of you. So it's going to be an interesting four years. I'm sure lots of hard issues, as you know, to confront and find solutions to, but I am hopeful that working together and with your continued engagement, we can make, we can move the needle on many of those. So thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Knight?
Thank you to everyone on the dais and my new coworkers. I am new to this space, but I'm not new to the community. Lived here all of my life and I felt some of the very pains that you all have stood behind that podium and have spoke about. And so, you know, humility first, to whom much is given, much is required. There's much required. We can be on the other side of this desk and we can talk about what's going on and what's happening, but it's going to take we, and I say we, that means everybody in the room, working together. We are not going to agree on anything, I don't, or on everything. I don't know any group of people that agree on everything. And that's a good thing, to be able to be challenged, to be able to hear each other's voices, to be able to agree, to disagree, but still work together for the greater good of this community. I hope that we can come together and do that work. I'm not a stranger to work and I'm, I'm happy to say I will get my hands in the dirt at any time. I love to have conversations with people. I can share my input, you can share yours, and then we can figure out how we're going to get to the end point where we are all successful in supporting one another as a community. So I'm grateful to get my hands dirty with this community, with this group of wonderful people up here and with this wonderful city that we live in. And I hope that we can get to a great point where we can all say we have reached a little bit of success in 2023 and move it forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. City Clerk?
A non-election update.
Okay, good.
So Matthew Ellis, who works in the Archives Department, is an Archives Assistant, has released a book this week called The Hidden History of Grand Rapids. I haven't had a chance to pick it up, but he's had some favorable media with it and he's uncovered some interesting stories with his work with the Grand Rapids Historical Society and his work in the Archives. So that book is out in local bookstores and the like. So thankful that Matthew can be involved in our historical record. So kind of some of the neat things that are happening at the Archives Department. That's it.
Thanks, thanks for highlighting that. City Attorney?
I'll just say, welcome to our new city commissioners and I look forward to working with all of you and getting to know you. And when in doubt, please ask. And I'd like to say also, I appreciate the community comments. It's, it holds us to a standard of accountability and we appreciate the engagement. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you commissioners for your work today. And again, I look forward to 2023 and working with each of you and a special congratulations to all of our newly elected commissioners. I do want to thank the staff for the work in preparing over the holiday, holidays, rather, for this meeting. In addition to getting ready for the meeting, we're also, as Commissioner O'Connor acknowledged, we opened the Emergency Operations Center for days in a row for the 25 inches or so, or so of snow over that period of time. But thank you for the work, all of you who participated in that, all of our public safety departments, public works departments, as well as we had some administrative support, as well as people who were checking on the unhoused community and ensuring their welfare and well-being during that time. So thank you for that. Also, happy today that we received a clean audit, a reported by fiscal year 2022 audit by our comptroller. And I want to thank him and our third-party auditor, Plant Moran, as well as our financial services staff, as well as all of the employees who have fiscal accountability and integrity when dealing with public finances. So that was good news and that report is online. And for those of you who would like to look at the citizens' version of that, very high level overview of the audit. And the presentation today that we had during the committee of the whole, encourage everyone to look at that. And what you'll see is both the historical references to how this has been an ongoing issue, both nationally as well as locally for some years. And here in the past five years or so, there's a snapshot of the data on the unhoused community. And the most recent data point shows that there's about 911 emergency shelter beds and about 858 people seeking housing. So there is emergency shelter capacity, but there still is about, has been around the same number over the past five years, about 50 or so people at night, for whatever reasons, are not going in the shelter. And so I appreciate the dialogue on the dais and the referral of this to the Public Safety Committee to talk more about what can be done to, first of all, to continue to increase housing supply, but secondly, to very intentionally with a level of accountability, address the people who are, for whatever reason, unable to seek shelter. And continue to work with our community partners who've been doing great work over the years. But as we heard before, we have to do something differently, more holistically and collaboratively. And lastly, I want to wish everyone a happy Martin Luther King Jr. Day as it's upcoming. He is vicariously my personal mentor, if you will. I know he stands large for a lot of people, but for me, for a lot of reason in that he is the Reverend Doctor Martin Luther King Jr., also a great man who pledged a great fraternity, Commissioner Moody. But also his work around fighting poverty, the war on poverty. And as he died, addressing these very issues around housing and the chronically unhoused is very important. And I think it's very apropos around this time that we find ourselves in this conversation, continuing the work that he once dreamed of, particularly for people who are poor. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, City Manager. And I'll just add my welcome to our new colleagues around this table. So welcome, commissioners. You have a tall task before you. I remember sitting in your chair and feeling completely overwhelmed with this huge learning curve. So just know that you have a lot of support, obviously in the community, people who supported you as you ran for office, but you also have a lot of support around this table to help you learn as quickly as you can what you need to know to cast the votes that we're asked to cast. Oh, Commissioner Moody?
Madam Mayor, let us not forget, or if you don't know, that our city manager will be bringing the keynote address.
Oh, yes, thank you, Sunday.
Sunday celebration.
At the Sunday celebration in honor of.
Keynote address.
Yes, thank you for, for reminding us of that. And we'll make sure everyone knows about it if they want to come hear him speak.
Thanks, a great man of a great fraternity to remind us.
All right, so I'll add just a couple more thoughts today. I'm going to add my thanks to our entire public works team and John Gurney and James Hurt, the entire team that stepped up and sacrificed time with their family during the holiday to get out there and provide the essential services related to clearing our streets and making sure that people could get out and about to see their family, but also get to emergency services. We know how critical that is. A lot of people stepped up and I just want to say thank you for your incredible work. We're very fortunate to have such a strong team. When we experience severe weather events, many of us have lived through many of those and it is always the public works department that steps up and works 24 hours a day to make sure that we're able to get out and about. So thank you for your work. And then I'll just add, Libby, thank you for being here. You know, I live in your neighborhood and I went over to the park on the weekend and it is heartbreaking and all of us feel that and, and we all share your desire. We don't want anyone, anyone to, to feel like they have no place to go and they don't have a safe place to go at night. So I share your heartbreak and know that we had a great discussion today. You got me choked up, Libby, sorry about that. We had a great discussion today, but what the discussion highlighted is that we do have great services in this community. We have, we have individuals who care deeply. We have organizations that are doing good work, but we clearly have gaps and we've had gaps for a long time. We have a system that is sometimes fragmented and we have a system that doesn't have multi-sector partners around the table and we don't have some shared vision around some accountability measures that we can all be working towards. And we have work to do. And I assure you, this body, myself, city manager, city staff, Connie Bohatch, Kate Behrens, who spoke today, we are committed to this work. We are committed, our hearts break with you. And it's tough and we all know that, right? These are complex, complicated issues as we try to come alongside people who are really hurting and need a lot of help. And I wish there was an easy solution, I really do, but there's not. And, and that's the work that we all have to do when we try to change systems, right? I wish I had a magic wand, I don't. None of us do. But as so many of my colleagues up here said, it requires all of us working together because continuing to have a fragmented system where we're not aligning resources with good outcomes, we will continue to have more of the same and that is not okay. So anyway, I just want to thank everyone who came out today, everyone who is working hard to make our community a better place. I hope that we continue to do that even when we disagree as we look to the year ahead. So with that, we're adjourned.